Thirty-six, aren't those the trust lands in each section?
I thought it was sixteen thirty-two.
Thirty-two?
But I don't remember, the school trust lands, they were all set aside, yeah, it's, yeah, there's, there's two in each, in each township.
Yeah.
Um, I can't remember what the exact numbers are offhand, sorry.
I think, I think that's all trust land. State school.
Yeah, I may be able to tell you here in a second.
But I'm.
But you're talking like all the way over here?
I'm looking to the east of it.
They always look the vacuum during the.
Yeah.
During the study session.
Alright, well, we'll, we'll look into that just to make sure.
Yeah, I think we should look at it.
Yes, that would be right there. So, so there are other, other possibilities, um, and they're interested and they seemed excited about it, so I was excited about that. That's a good thing for, for Babbitt, especially after how long of, for trying to figure out industrial park and. Wouldn't be along with that. So, um, yeah, that's like all that. Really, we kinda had to discuss unless, yeah, we can't discuss anything else, we can't. Decisions. Yeah, no decisions, we can't discuss anything else, we can't talk about anything else that's not on the study, right, on the agenda?
Uh, correct.
Yeah.
I mean, we could, I mean, we could get creative and try to shoehorn it in.
Right, Les, why don't you come on up and tell us about the heat pump? Yeah.
You're serious, right?
I don't know, yeah.
About the heat pump?
Yeah, I only heard part of what you said, so.
Oh, well.
To be honest with you.
Actually, uh, the, uh, the heat pumps are, uh. You know, uh, you know, I've said this many, many times before, that the heat pumps in the system that you put in actually was an excellent system. But one of the things that you have kind of, uh, I mean, everybody's aware of is that once the application is made, sometimes there's variations in the building. And meaning that there's things that weren't anticipated or the specs that they were taken from the building were wrong. Or, or right, but, um, now there's, there is probably that, well, there are more efficient heat pumps out there. So. Case in point, normally they operate at three times efficiency ones that we have, but the, uh, the new ones go to three point five, so over a period of time, that extra, what, twenty-five percent, thirty percent does make a difference as far as performance. But what happened was recently is that a number of the steering council committee came to me and they said, well, Leslie, let's take a little bit different approach to this, what happens if we look at the BTU usage of a couple of these heat pumps, see what they are and see if we can't combine maybe one of them. And if we do that, then it's been an additional ten thousand on an extra heat pump. We can utilize, cross over the two heat pumps and one will do the work of two. So in that case, we can save some additional money that way. So that's what we're looking at right now, I'm gonna put together some heat load, uh, heat load, uh, analysis and we'll study that and, uh, we'll look at some costs. Just for your information, sometimes when you spec the heat pump like at three ton, it may not be a big seller. But when you spec a heat, a heat pump at four ton, you understand this. Um, it might be a big seller, so the cost of it actually goes down just because of the market, whatever the market determines. So that's some of the things that we're looking at right now and I'll get the steering company, uh, steering committee, rather. Some information on that. So that's about all the exciting news I have on the heat pump situation.
Okay, well, well, that's exciting, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on, just even in the, in the works and.
Well, we wanna, we wanna move this forward and.
Right.
Take advantage of the savings and I know that you did put some numbers together on, uh, the electrical usage. And, uh, very interesting, it is, it is a bargain, if you look at it that way, as far as heating this building. You have a very good system of questions, what we decided to do, to master. Thanks, Leslie.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, we can turn this and we'll wait to the regular meeting, can we?
Um, can we?
Well, it said, it says right here, uh.
The agenda says five, it doesn't have a start time for the.
Yeah.
Meeting itself.
Well, we can go right to it, can't we?
Okay, great.
I'll move to adjourn the study session.
Motion by Lassie and second by Fitzpatrick to adjourn the study session. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's call the regular meeting to order. Uh, public input, is anyone here for public input? Well, hello, welcome. I know you're not here for public input, unless you wanna be here for public input. Do you have anything for public input?
I did wanna say something, um, Councilor White called me earlier before the meeting and he wanted to apologize for not being here. Um, he has snowed in, in our fixed circle right now. And he, he's hoping to for surely make one meeting a month for the next couple of months while he's working up there, um, in Alaska. So he just wanted to make sure he, he, or, like, let everyone know that he is apologizing for not being here today.
Thank you. Um, so let me go on to the additions or deletions, um, there's an addition of a soft, softball complex building. We'll put that under new business for P.
P, wow.
I know.
Down there, I'm, at least we haven't got to W, X, Y, Z.
Yeah, then what we do?
Double A, double A.
Okay.
I want to approve the addition.
Okay, motion by Lassie, do we have a second? Second by Fitzpatrick. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, so on to the consent agenda. Approve the minutes of the study session of regular meeting of January twenty-first, approve all bills and payrolls as audited by the audit committee, overtime report, summary of funds and correspondence. Do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept. Second it.
Okay, motion by Fitzpatrick, second by Lassie. Any discussion? Okay, I have some discussion, so, um, regarding the minutes of the study session, so, um, there, during the meeting, it was said that, um, council had received all the summaries every month, um, when Dwayne was asking about it and, um, revenue expenditure reports? Right, and you had said that they had gotten one every month?
No, I said that in the last couple of months they have for the revenue expenditure.
Okay, last couple, okay, I thought, I thought you had said, but there, it was for everyone, okay.
No, that was something new that Jim had asked in October, I believe, to add to the agendas or to the consent agenda.
The revenues and the summaries?
The revenue.
Expenditure?
Expenditure grant.
Oh, that was new?
Yeah, that was never there, just the summary funds was.
Okay, that must be new then, alright, so, never mind on that.
Yeah, is that, is that E's? Yeah. I don't remember seeing that, but, but I'm new, so.
Oh, me too. I, I thought we saw it, so, um, okay, so then, um, in regards to the, um, approval of all bills and payrolls as audited by the audit committee. Um, this stack right here is the Minnesota power bills that come to like a hundred thousand dollars. Did the previous council, like, approve these and why weren't they paid at the time?
This was something that, um, we had started in, I'm not sure what month was it starting, we started paying them ECH so that they weren't late instead of doing a paper bill. And so that was overlooked when we were putting the audit, um, together, the audits up together, um, because that's something that I mark on on my, correct?
December twenty-third, twenty-four, maybe? Cause it's like. That's what, that's what's in here.
It started in March twenty-four, okay, so March, March is when it started, so.
Okay, so were these on, like, the revenue or, I'm sorry, the expenditures, like?
They would have all been in there.
Okay, so, but they weren't?
So we didn't have any copies to put in with our audit files and things, so we personally reprinted everything to make sure that yous have everything, you know, that we have a copy of everything, so that was something we, we kinda forgot to do at that time when we moved over to the ECH instead of doing the paper payments, because we don't get bills anymore, we, it's all emailed.
Okay, and so these are earned on the audit?
Those are, they were not on audit, they were in your expenditure and revenue, so it all reflected on your fund summary, but it was not in audit and that's why we printed.
Okay, so they weren't in last year's audit, correct?
In twenty-four.
Right, correct, okay. Um, so I guess. But they were figured into the budgets then, so the budgets were. Correct as far as that goes.
Right, and they were, I mean, reflected in the fund summaries everywhere, things like that, so.
Alright, so it's just like, like, each bill is like ten thousand dollars, so that was, that's just a concern that, that they weren't approved or it's not like, I guess, like, well, John, you weren't here either, so, yeah. I guess I just have a concern about this because it's a big, that's like a hundred thousand dollars. That we are now approving, that wasn't in there before, so, um, and it wasn't in there before because it was overlooked on accident or?
Definitely overlooked on accident, yeah.
Okay. Alright, um, and then, then I have a question on the summary of funds that we received. Um, so like the first lake campground portion is the total balance for twelve thirty-one twenty-four, right? Is a negative number? But it should be a positive number?
Around the first lake campground?
Right?
So, yeah, there was, um, that's something I had to ask the auditors about because the way that they, it should be. I think on here it should be, it says eighty-four thousand, I think is the, what the total would be if you pulled the numbers across, but there's journal entries that were done because we moved the money from uh, the four eighteen account down to the five oh, five oh five. And so that changed something, but it didn't show it within the expenditures and the revenues, it just showed it as a journal entry, so it did not, um, in this, in this spreadsheet, it doesn't show that in your ticket, so that my totals match on the bottom. So I have to make a note on the side of it on my entries to be what the total is.
So.
So there's something, I wasn't sure on how to total that, because it's a total entries, not expenditures or revenues.
So was this a number that you put in physically?
I had to put that one in physically for it to, to total the, um.
So the correct total is four million?
That is the correct total.
That is the correct number, so the year-to-date income is actually the same number as the balance?
Mm-hmm. Because that was an adjustment.
But you get these numbers from the.
Mm-hmm, expenditure.
Expenditure accounts, so. I guess I'm still not understanding it.
I would have to show you physically with my computer on how the journal entries. Where, journal entries are just moving money from fund to fund, so it doesn't represent it in your disbursement in your income.
So which number are we approving, are we approving the number it, it shows that it should be?
This is the one it should be, yeah.
Which, which one?
The fifth, negative fifteen seventy-four ninety-two. There's that amount of money. The one in. Trying to think of when that was done, July or August, when we moved money from West Babbitt or from the fourteen, the first lake campground over to the, the five oh five. We did a journal entry to move those funds down to the campground, that's what it is. So there were the journal entry done to move the funds from one fund to another. And for some reason, I can't make, I don't know what to do on the spreadsheet to show that journal entry to make it come out with that total, because if you do, if you add this all across, it's like eighty-four thousand.
Should be a positive number, not a negative number.
Correct, but it's like eighty.
Eighty-four thousand four hundred thirty-three dollars and seventy-one cents.
Yeah, so that's one question I am gonna ask the auditors on how they wanna be to show that in there, but I haven't gotten asked that yet.
Okay, do you know, cause this happened, I think, last month too, do you know, when did you ask them, is this recently done?
Recently, yeah.
Like, yesterday or last week? And they haven't gotten back yet?
Oh, I was gone Friday and yesterday, I left early on Friday and yesterday and I, no, I haven't heard back from, from, so.
Okay, so, so. The correct number for the totals is four million six hundred fifty-five? Two hundred thirty-nine thirty-three?
Correct.
That is the correct total for the summary of the city funds?
Correct, that matches our cash balance within our accounting.
Okay. Okay, so then, my other question then is on our year-to-date of the, um, expenditures, the city of Babbitt expenditures guideline and then the revenue guidelines. Not all, the pages were in our packets for those. So I just did preliminary, I got the right, all the pages. So I literally just went to the report totals of each, each of them, the expenditure and the revenues, are those numbers accurate?
Those are, yes, those are correct.
These numbers at the bottom are all accurate. Okay, so. Someone say no? Um, so then I have a question because based on the budget, there was an anticipated revenue of four million, four million fifty-eight thousand. And the year-to-date amount was above that, which was great, five million two hundred twenty-six and something. Um, and then December had nine hundred sixty-six thousand seven hundred thirty-seven added in there. Was that like, how did it be taxed in December? Like, last month?
Our last, yep.
Or two months?
Yep.
Okay.
Our second, um, um, portion.
Portion, yep. Okay, um, so like the expenditures though, came in at, uh, way above what was budgeted, um, at five million five hundred ninety-one thousand and whatever. When the budget itself is only like two million, like, how does it get to that?
Um, well, there is something.
And I took these just from what was the expenditures and revenues.
Yeah, there's a, a lot of things that goes through the, the general fund. Um, like the current account is a pass-through and so that, those stories are gonna go in here, um. I don't know, ask the question.
Okay, so, so what is the true number for our year-to-date? Like, what do we have in our, 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 our junk, our, like, in the bank right now? So like, according to this one, we should have four million six hundred fifty-five, but when I do the year-to-date.
That's, that's where in, with our investments and everything.
This, this is what?
Yes.
This is what the investment is, okay, so but the expenditures are not showing investments, okay?
Correct.
Alright, so when the budget is over, if you're, if the money is being overspent and we don't have the money coming in, where is the money coming from to pay those bills? Is that coming from the general fund?
Yes.
So from basically our savings, because that's how I was always explained, that the general fund is right.
Yes, it would come from the general fund.
Okay, and. Everyone was aware of like where their budgets were and. And so when, um, there had been like some, some things where there was nothing noted in the budgets in the two, twenty-twenty-four budgets column, um, then it would just go to the year-to-date. And so then it'd be kind of like different on the other side, like, you know, you're, you're overspending by four hundred and four percent, you know, big massive number. So again, I just want to reiterate that last year's council was aware that they were overspending.
Right, they, they knew the numbers, they asked, uh, every time they made a decision, they asked, uh, do we have funds in these, these certain fund accounts and things like that, so.
And the departments all were, knew that then too.
Correct.
Okay. Alright, those are, those are my questions for discussion, does anyone else have any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
White, absent Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
Lassie, absent Zupansich.
No. Motion carries. Okay, attorney's report.
Uh, I don't have any updates on anything at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Joel. Unfinished business, garbage ordinance amendment. Okay, that is eleven.
Point, point of order, Mayor, um, if you voted no, I think you don't have a quorum to pass that. Because the quorum is not just those in attendance, if you followed what the Minnesota Supreme Court just determined, it's based on the total number. Uh, and so a quorum for this body is three, uh, and a, a majority, or a majority needs to be inclusive of the total number of five. So if you only have two.
Oh.
Voting yes. On tonight's agenda, uh, that motion would fail, under my understanding of.
Okay. I did.
Minnesota Supreme Court's opinion on majorities, so.
I did not. I did not know that.
I didn't either.
Thank you for.
Yeah.
So what happens then, we can't pay the bills?
That would be the result.
And that's not.
You could pull something, you could set to ten, but.
Yeah, you could approve the other.
And approve the rest.
Or, and.
It depends on what you're not approving.
Well, I'm kind of not a fan of a hundred thousand dollars. So, but that's already been paid.
I, yeah, I guess I don't quite understand that, I think what was missing was the documentation of that, because the amounts were reported and it was being paid ACH.
Yeah.
So I think what you're saying is that.
I'll give you something that know about it.
Well, the amounts, the amounts were, they didn't approve the, the bill itself, but they approved the total and that total would have been reviewed by the audit committee, I, I, I wasn't here for that, but I, that would be my understanding. Also, I think it's as audited by the audit committee. I don't know that that indicates that they did in fact audit all of those bills, but that they were considered and paid. So the amounts represented in those, I believe would have been presented in those packets for voting. Otherwise, they wouldn't have been able to get paid.
Right.
But the, well, they can still be audited by the audit committee for review.
Well, John, John left too long, but, um, I was just kind of blown away by it, but.
Yeah.
Alright, well, I just realized I forgot to ask about something else here though, as I'm looking at the consent agenda, um. Alright, so.
You can bring it, you can bring it back to the floor for this.
Right, yeah, it's like nothing passed, so, um, alright, so then I'm gonna bring back to the overtime report. So I have some questions about the overtime report and again, because I'm new here, um, how is that figured? So when I was on council before, um, overtime generally had to be approved ahead of time and it was always in, in, in the administrative office to be more like flexed, not flexed, but like, well, yeah, kind of flexed. Um, to avoid overtime, just based on, on that. Um, so while I was pulling back all, like, I spent a lot, like, way more time on this than, than, than I wanted to. Um, I noticed that the administrative department, which then also had a lot of overage in what was budgeted and the actual numbers. And, um, Becky, you had received a significant number of overtime, so I'm wondering, is it because you're like, like, a lot of overtime, like. I don't necessarily wanna say number, but significantly large number. Can you explain to me, help me get a grasp on it, why, why the overtime was so high?
Elections for sure, we had three elections this year. So that took a lot of overtime and then we had the power pole, um, collapse. So that was overtime on my end because I was the only one that was working. So those were two big ones. Um, the last couple of weeks, we've had short staff because of illnesses and things, so that's where some of that overtime came from. I do try to flex my hours. I mean, I have six kids, I, I don't want to stay here longer than I have to.
Right, right, no, there's like, there's overtime like all the time, so, um, or every week, I should say, so. So I just have a question about that, I understand that the, like, police department doesn't always have the ability to, um, adjust, but it seems like the admin department has, has had, like, the most. And so like, I did take elections into consideration and I, I looked back, see with the presidential year, four years ago, where that overtime came for that office and, um, you know, like, your overall overtime was almost four times larger than what, what they had, so is there something that needs to be done to, within the office to adjust that? Because, um, you know, that's something that's not budgeted and then the budget already was overspent, so I'm just wondering if there's something the council needs to do to help, is there, um, any?
I think also in this first year, I mean, it's, it's been a, a big learning curve for me, working with the city and learning my, what I need to do and who needs help where and when and things like that, um. I don't know, I. I don't know what the, how, I don't know, what do you mean by the council help?
Like, I don't know, like, because we've never seen that number, um, over.
We have, I feel like we have a lot of projects going on now where we haven't in the last few years. Like, it's, it's, we have quite a few projects coming on. So we have a lot of, we've had so many, um, extra meetings in the last, this last year, almost on weekly basis, I feel like.
Okay, so, so I believe this was in the overtime report. You had like a, and it, the, the number itself is minute, you had a quarter extra overtime hour than the other two people that attended the West Babbitt and the study session. But I know everyone left at the same time, so like, what attributed to that?
That was, I came in early because of the, the weather, I leave sometimes, um, fifteen minutes early just to make sure that I get here on time. So that was bad. Okay, it was a quarter hour over.
Okay, and you're taking lunch then too, right, because the hours are, the hours for a reason, so. Alright. Alright, so, um, that being said, summary of funds. I guess, I guess, okay, so. I guess I would like to take out the summary of funds, just because that does not. Add up for me?
You can take them one at a time, instead of taking it as a slate as the consent agenda, and take them and vote on each item individually, Mayor.
Each of the.
Or, or you can, yep, or you can take, you can take a slate and remove one and deal with that on its own or however you wanna do it.
Alright, so. I guess I will. Alright, so let's just go by one by one, um, a motion to approve the minutes of the study session. Right, that's what you mean, right? Okay. Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the study session.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, second, a motion by Zupansich, second by Fitzpatrick. Any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
White, absent Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
Lassie, absent Zupansich.
Yes, motion carries, appro, approval of all bills and payrolls as.
Excuse me, you just said study session and we had a regular meeting.
And regular meeting, okay, sorry, I had my piece of paper over it.
Okay.
Thanks for that. Thanks for that. Um, okay, so motion passes. Approval of all bills and payrolls is audited by the audit committee. Do we have a motion?
I'll move with you. I'll second.
Motion by Lassie and a second by Fitzpatrick. Any discussion? Roll call please.
White, absent Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
Flossing, absent Zupan Cich.
Yes, motion carries. Overtime repart, report. Okay, I will, I will make a motion to accept all the overtime report, um, except for the city clerk. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Lassie, discussion?
Why would we not accept, uh, so?
Um, I, I think there needs to be, um, a little bit more maybe, um, I don't want to say verification. Um, I just, I just have concerns that there is so much overtime that, I just have a concern about all the overtime. Um, so I just want to be able to look into that a little bit more.
And, yeah, and I understand that, but if she worked it, then she'd be paid for it.
That's true.
I mean, and how would you, how would you unwork overtime?
Right. Okay, I get that.
So I guess I
So, so, okay, so then the overtime is not pre-approved? It's just paid out, no matter what?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Legit. Um, all right, I will remove my motion.
Okay. And I'll move to accept the overtime report. Actually, that's all we're doing is to check the report.
Mm-hmm. Right.
So I would move to accept the overtime report.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Lassie and seconded by Fitzpatrick. So roll call please.
White, absent Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
Flossing, absent Zupan Cich.
Yes. Motion carries. Summary of funds.
Isn't that the one you wanted to leave out?
Mm-hmm. So I will make a motion, um, to not accept the summary of funds.
And we can table it till the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just to move it, I'll second it.
Second by Lassie, motion by Zupan Cich, discussion?
This would be tabled until the next meeting, right? Ending, uh, some of the questions that were asked, okay?
Sorry, just for clarification, then, the motion was to table this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that's what the second was?
Okay.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Okay, any further discussion? Nope, okay, roll call please.
White, absent Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
Flossing, absent Zupan Cich.
Yes, motion carries. Uh, correspondence, I don't think we had any.
I didn't see any.
Yeah, so we don't have to move on that.
Uh,
Or did we?
I think there's correspondence from the state on the exchange of land.
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh.
Right?
Did we have that under that?
Before the
That was under this thing.
Was it under this?
Yeah. Industrial part.
Oh, maybe I moved it.
What about us, does that
Wait. You had the, you had the correspondence under the workshop?
We did get something from Bolig, is that a post comment?
No, that was just their presentation, so.
Oh, my, my mistake, sorry.
Okay. And then attorney's report we already had, correct?
Uh, correct.
Okay. Um, eleven, unfinished business, the garbage ordinance amendment.
Yeah, I have some questions about this. Um, it's been approached by a couple of people that would like to know why we pay so much and only get one, get less service.
John, I, I might be able to answer that right off the bat. Uh, that question really has to do with our negotiated contract with the garbage man that's, that was about we're on our third year and it expires in 2026. So that really doesn't have too much of a bearing on the ordinance, you know, as such. And, but it is a legitimate question.
Another question I had was why can't we pick our own garbage company?
That was an option. Uh, when we entered into a contract with, uh, Gruba. It was the council's decision at that time to have one garbage car responsible for everything.
I, I can add to that. It, it was substantially cheaper to contract Gruba to do all of the pickups. That what we pay for garbage right now is less than what it would be to contract either garbage company as a sole residence.
And the other thing I have is you have them, you want the garbage cans put away by noon. Other times the garbage is collected before noon.
And that's one of the reasons why we're going to revise the contract, or the, uh, the ordinance, because you're entirely right. A lot of people aren't picked up until afternoon. So this is one of the things why I brought it up in the first place, was to address the fact of people leaving their garbage cans out there for five, six days or until the next week. And, uh, what, what I really wanted was for, you know, let's get some order to it, regardless of when it's picked up, decide whether you are going to allow them 24 hours or, uh, till six o'clock, that same day or whenever. But the council should address that.
I think six o'clock in the evening would work better than noon.
Yeah, I, you know, I think we should discuss that and, and see. Yeah.
And nothing else.
Okay.
Well, the other thing
There was a large discussion over the garbage with a couple of people this year.
Yeah, I know, we, uh, when we did the ordinance and, and did the, and agreed with the holler, the people were a little upset because the garbage bill did go up. But then we checked the garbage bills with every neighbor in the city and we were right in line with everything. Uh, I guess, Joel, as I looked at the, uh, the ordinance, the one that we had here that we're operating under is, uh, was what, done in 1993? And, uh, I guess that's the only one. Yep, May 17th, 1993. And there's a couple of things we need to change in there. And one would be the size of the garbage can.
I don't think that's correct, Counselor. I believe that was, you're looking at ordinance number 110?
110, yeah.
Um.
The other one, I think is
Is that what's
Just a sample ordinance, is that?
Is that what's codified in the, in, in chapter 50?
No, I'm not sure if it's in our ordinance book.
This is from the ordinance book.
Oh, this is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is not just a sample ordinance. This is the, this is what Counselor Fitzpatrick was referring to with the removal of cans by noon.
Yeah, I think both of these address that. And I think this one also had a 32 gallon size. And it does not mention how long the garbage cans can stay out.
It says 32 gallons, no straight and non-bleeding barrels.
Yeah, of 32 gallons, yeah. And what are the, and the ones that are plastic, are they 65 or 95 or what?
Our garbage contractor allows up to a maximum of two 96 gallon cans.
And that's where I'm saying where the ordinance should be compatible with what is in the garbage contract. So, other, you know, it's not, it would be confusing to people. So I think we need to, uh, when we do that, John, we should address the size and then, uh, how long we can leave the garbage cans out. Other than that, it seems to be, the ordinance seems to be pretty standard.
Yeah, I would agree.
So I would make one suggestion that we change it to the 96 gallon. Uh, and then make a determination when should garbage cans be taken in off of the street.
I'd say six o'clock because that's when people are home from work by then. Now, some people leave their cans out longer than first thing in the morning because they're working.
Yep.
And also their garbage isn't collected all the time until sometimes two o'clock in the afternoon.
I think six is reasonable. I think if you're going to be out longer or have to leave and, you know, if you're leaving out, coming, going out of town and coming back a day or two later, probably have a neighbor Yeah. pick you up.
Well, and then if it's windy or whatever, and not blowing around for days.
Kirsten.
Would you be opposed to 7:30 or eight, just because mine shift work is 7:30 to seven, or seven to seven, so a lot of times they don't get home until 7:15, 7:30?
Okay.
I've heard that one in the office. Maybe even the following morning, people at work, midnight?
So, so I was gonna have that, there's, there's an afternoon shift at the mine too that's not done until midnight.
Yeah.
They're probably leaving before it gets picked up, or could be. So, like, the next morning, maybe?
I wouldn't mind going into the next day within reasonable time in the morning, but I don't want them out there all week, like I have with my neighborhood.
So everyone generally has to have it out by 8:00 AM, right?
That's, that's the time. They can put it out earlier if they want.
Right, right. So what about 8:00 AM to 8:00 AM the next day? 24 hours?
A-actually, I believe that the current ordinance requires that it be out before seven.
Yeah.
Oh.
After, after six o'clock the day before and that, sorry, this is what happens. Spend a lot of time reading it.
Really?
But it's, it's bizarre. It, it has to be out by 7:00 AM, like technically you're not supposed to be allowed to put it up after 7:00 AM.
Yeah, and they really never come before seven o'clock.
Yeah, so, well, yeah. Uh, I, I think it's important that the contract with the collector matches the requirements you're placing on the citizens for when they have to have their receptacles out, what kind they are, and when they have to take them back. That would be, sorry, I'm, I'm not an elected official, but that's my opinion from reading this. You may want to take into consideration when, when revising this.
Well, I read the contract today and I think the contract says seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay.
But like I said, it's up for renewal next year.
So 7:00 AM, the day of garbage collection to 7:00 AM the next day?
Eight.
Eight?
Eight.
8:00 AM the next day?
Seven, eight the next day.
25 hours. Okay. Is that what you would like to move?
Yes, it is.
Okay, motion by Fitzpatrick, do we have a second?
Well, I think I will second that.
Okay, second by Lassie, any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
White, absent Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
Flossing, absent Zupan Cich.
Yes, motion carries.
No, it'd be seven to seven, 196 gallon capacity.
96? Yep.
Yep.
Okay. And Babbitt Blue Line Arena contract, this failed last time due to lack of a quorum.
And it will fail again today.
Oh, yeah, I have to have to change it.
Now we'll table that. Okay, C, Deputy Clerk Trevor Callan, quick treasure figures attendance at MCFOA conference, March 18th through the 21st. So Okay, so, um, Sarah sent everyone, um, an email. If you were able to read, read your emails, um, when she got it and stuff. And then, um, Becky has this in here, right? Yeah, I'm, I'm right there. So we need a motion to allow, not allow, discussion, one, the other? Does anyone have any questions about it?
Yeah, how long would it take you if you want?
Well, our last, um, conference we went to, I think we had, I think I had 15 points.
How much?
15, it's four points for every, no, one point for every four hours. You go.
And there's an education portion, and then this, this one is strictly for the additional points currently, not the education portion where that's usually a week? There are like three classes?
Yes.
So the most points you could get on this one is four, right?
Yeah. We're going to this, it's four days. I don't, I'll have to look. I'll do it then. Um, I think it was 15 is what I got last year for this conference.
I thought this one was different.
Do you remember about the academy or points? I think when you got 15 points, it was for the academy.
Was that the academy? Was it six and a half or what?
I'm not sure, I know it's
There was one that was six and then
I think Sarah said she saw something where it was for, um, experience points, not education.
Okay.
They were calculated.
Okay, so it was just the experience points, but you also need 25 points for those.
So I guess my question would be, if you and Sarah both go, is Kirsten able to handle the office all by herself for a week? I know you'd be enjoying a peace and quiet with
So I myself, um, just have, in general, a concern with not just this type of training, um, it's other department trainings as well when people are still new within the city or not here. We don't have a policy or procedure on it or anything like that, which was actually on one of my lists, but, um, and I have a concern about being short-staffed in, in the office myself. So, um, those are my concerns and this is not an academy, it's, it's the, the other edgy friends. Yeah. So, so we need a motion to, um, either allow both of them, one of them, none of them? Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I think the best option would be to recommend Rebecca to go.
Is that what your motion is?
Yes.
So your motion is to let Rebecca go, but not Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Fitzpatrick, do we have a second?
Can I, um, I actually would like to recommend Sarah going if you're just gonna let one of us go. Um, she's, she's been doing this a little bit longer than me for getting her points, so she's closer to getting it than I am. Are you thinking of the academy coming up? Would you still, both of us go to the academy then, or are you also just thinking of one at a time going?
I, I can't speak on behalf of
With the academy, um, we're with the same group of people, um, each year. So it's kind of like school, you have your, your class, you have to go through that, through the whole You have your, your class, you have to go through that, through the whole process with them. So it would be kind of nice if we still could go to that one together.
Do you know what the dates are for that?
It's in September. I don't have a lot of dates off the top of my head.
Well, I'm more inclined to send one to this one and both to the academy. I know you've got a lot of work coming up with the audit coming this, this month. And I think Sarah would be the most logical one to go, and then both of you go to the other one.
Yeah.
Just my feeling.
Yeah. There's also one in May of another conference, so.
Because I'm all for sending our staff to, to get training, whether they're in the clerk's office or the street department or police or wherever. I think the more we can send people for training to keep up with all the recent trends and whatever, the better off the city will be.
All right, so, so what's on the table right now is this conference in March, so.
And I will change my motion to send Sarah. And I will second that with a smile.
Okay, any further discussion? Can you roll call please?
White, absent Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
Flossing, absent DuPontic.
Yes, motion carries. Um, D, dock purchase. Quote, go ahead.
So I collected some quotes for you guys, one from MinCor, which is four thousand dollars more expensive than what it was when we originally budgeted this just a few months ago, which is incredibly unfortunate. Those docks are fully welded steel, galvanized, and then they're galvanized after welding, so they, they do not rust. That's what we have down there already. They're an incredibly premium product, very heavy duty, but they, they're expensive. And, and again, they're, they're an extra four thousand dollars now for the pair. The second quote is from Dockson Wheels, which is a nice heavy-duty dock as well. It is strictly steel, which will outlast my time here. So I guess I'm not real worried if you guys want to choose that one or not. The third quote is from Jimmy Z Sales. It's only four feet wide. It's aluminum. It's lightweight. And I, I'm gonna not recommend that because I, I asked him quite directly, you know, if, if pickups can back over those because that's what happens to our docks down there. And they're, they're not built for that. That's, that's just not what they are. My intention here when we started this was to take the floating docks that we have at the landing right now, our primary boat landing docks, and move them ones down. We've had some complaints that because those are floating docks, they're not as stable for the people that are trying to board their boat. So the quotes that we have are for stationary docks. They're on wheels so that we can roll them out easily enough, but we'd like to put those in place at the landing for people landing their boats and such.
Those were put in when we redid the whole boat landing, didn't those?
Those went in, yeah.
And those were from the DNR, right?
Those are MinCor brand, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a difference of what, about ten thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
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 Is the ten thousand dollars worth?
Again, even the standard steel will, will get me past my retirement, so I, probably not.
That's Dockson Wheels.
Yeah, Dockson Wheels, yeah.
So it's a rolling dock that's out there right now?
No, they're, they're floating.
Okay, they are floating.
Yeah, and so that's what we're trying to do is get away from the floating.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, they're.
And are, is staff able to pull these in and out?
Yep. Yep, so the, the Dockson Wheels quote, uh, well, both of them for that matter, are, are on heavy-duty steel rolling wheels where we can just go onto it with the loader and pull it up.
And where would you store them?
Uh, we could roll them into the beach. These will probably store right on the edge of the dock, uh, over by the.
Do snowmobilers go up that?
At the landing?
Yeah.
Well, sure.
Like, I don't know if they do or not.
Yeah.
So, okay, but they won't be in the way then, like they'll see clearly.
No, we, we'd put them way over on the side, like, like we did years ago.
Okay.
Better make sure trucks can get in there.
What's that?
In the winter.
Oh, no, they, these, these would be stored way up by the, the boat cleaning station. Yeah, they wouldn't be anywhere near them. Glad we got the ice itself.
My question is where, do you have, do you have this budgeted?
It was budgeted for. I don't know where the city put it, but I was told that we put thirty thousand set aside for the docks at budget time. It wasn't, it's not something that's in my budget. I brought it up at budget time. And I was told after budget was done that we put that money aside somewhere.
I remember that, but I wasn't aware of where we, the person who said it, I don't know where they were gonna put it.
I, I don't know.
But it is something we have to have, isn't it, Tony?
Um, so they, we have four down there. We took two out this year. They were, they broke in half. They're completely rotten. So we're down to the two at the landing. We don't have the other two anymore. They're, they're just completely rotten and fell in half the last time we picked them up.
What's your recommendation?
I, I don't, I'm not opposed to buying the Dockson Wheels docks. I think so for a long time. They're, yeah, like ten grand cheaper than the MinCor docks at this point, I think. It was a fair.
There was a difference of about ten thousand.
It was a fair amount, yeah.
Yeah, they, they gave two bids.
Yeah, so, so, yep, so they have two. One of them is a regular green treat. The other one is a cedar-toned brown treat. It looks a little nicer. I don't know if we're super concerned with the aesthetics for, I don't remember what they were, another thousand bucks a piece or something for, for brown?
Like three thousand, two thousand something difference?
I, I think I would go with the standard green treat from Dockson Wheels.
The MinCor is a forty-five footer and the Dockson Wheels forty.
Yeah, they're just a little bit shorter. Forty's adequate. We, we measured that out. Also includes a handicap ramp.
Yeah. Well, maybe we'd take out our city facilities or something.
I, yeah, I think we just gotta look for where we put them on it, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'll have to look back at the budget. Well, I thought they, I don't think they specifically put it anywhere. I thought they said they were gonna come up with where it came from.
Oh, maybe.
I think that's what they said.
Oh, well, and maybe that's something I need to consider too.
Yeah, I don't remember them specifically budgeting it.
No, I was not specifically budgeted.
No.
So like, would it just come out of general fund?
Well, you could take it out of, like Jim said, city facilities or capital improvements even. I don't know if that would even consider a city facility, a dock. I don't think it actually comes in.
I guess my only concern is that it, are we like over budget now, under budget, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
I would change the budget.
Well, is it something you have to order today?
No. Uh, well, unfortunately Dockson Wheels is out in quite a lead time. They won't be here till late summer as it is right now today.
So if we table this until the next meeting, we, we can decide where we're gonna get the
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty-four thousand.
I can bring some fund, um, accomplished information. I just can choose, uh, decide on.
Okay, I'd move to table this until the next meeting.
Okay. All righty.
All right, I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Lassie, second by Fitzpatrick to table dock purchases until the next meeting. Any discussion? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, um, administration, twenty twenty-four accomplishments. I put this on the agenda because I was asked it, and it was not finished from last year's council that I believe asked for it. And all the other departments have put it, put theirs in.
Yeah, I just, um, I'd like to say that our administration, administration office, we did a lot of filing, organizing of records in the beginning of the year. Updated our retention guidelines, things like that. We were able to get our office space utilized and working for the way the three of us work in there. The girls, Sarah and Kirsten, have been working diligently on trying to get credit card processing in their office. We do have a new camphrom website with a credit card processing for that. We also have, now that if you came in and bought peptides or filled out an application for zoning and had to pay, you can pay by credit card with that. They also were able to set up utility portal for the, our utility billing and things like that. They've been working the last, almost a year probably on getting that set up, and that was finally rolled out January of this year. Um, and then just, I think working together as, as a group, I mean, we, all three of us are newer within this, this department. So we've been working on just working together and seeing how our little niche works in, in our office and really communicating and things like that, so.
Um, do you, I can't remember. Is there like, do you put like all the department's accomplishments for the year like in a binder or anything like that?
It's, it's.
It's just, just in the minutes. It's not in a, like, overall, okay. All right. All righty, thank you for that. Page twelve, committee reports. I don't have any committee reports on the ones that I'm on. Do you? We kind of, well, we did, what's Babett's later on? Planning its zoning, do you have anything?
Nothing, no.
Safety? John, are you on safety?
Joe.
Joe, Joe and, oh, just one question. Okay. Um, Joe's not here, so safety, public works.
Just wrote in that.
Yeah, right, right, nothing new. Um, okay, so I don't, rec, no, it's here for rec. Center?
Officer from the cemetery.
Well, that's good. All right, so on to new business thirteen. A, hire Alex Herring as casual labor for the street department.
Uh, I actually didn't add this to the agenda. At, at this time, he's our only applicant, however, for casual labor. I think we'll just hold off. We'll see what else we can collect. Maybe next meeting we'll circle back and, and make a list of, hopefully we have a list of applicants.
There was another applicant today, so.
Okay.
How many would you hire, Tony, do you?
I, I, it depends on what their schedules are and what their availability might be as to how many we actually want to use. Considering we only get to use sixty-seven shifts a year, if we have too many people, you can't even get them trained. So it, it's an incredibly difficult position to try and fill where you're actually getting effective people on it, but we'll see.
So you just table it until the next meeting?
Yeah, as, as he's the only one for right now. We did just post it on Facebook recently, so maybe that will raise some work. I, I don't.
Okay, have you tried WhatsApp Babett?
They do, they do the internet. I don't, I don't know that we're touching WhatsApp Babett.
Okay, all right, so tabled. Um, public safety committee appointment for one-year term ending twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-five. So there were two, two applicants?
Mm-hmm.
And has the safety committee looked at this at all?
We do not have a public safety committee at the moment. The one person you're appointing is for a public safety committee.
Mm-hmm.
And then Joe is uptown, so we do not have a forum.
Okay, so did Joe look at these? Did you get any feedback from Joe?
I did not get any feedback on these.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna move, we appoint Mike Ryan. I'll second that one.
Okay, motion to hire Mike Ryan by Lassie, second by Fitzpatrick. Any discussion? Okay, um, roll call please.
White, absent Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
Flossing, absent DuPontic.
Yes, motion carries. Increase wages for Martin Vaughn, Joe Atkinson, and Michelle Hoffman at the recycling center to eleven thirteen an hour effective January first, twenty twenty-five.
That is the new Minnesota minimum wage.
And is there money in the budget for this?
I believe for, yeah, it went up from ten sixty-eight to eleven thirteen.
Right, no, I mean, in the, in the budget. The twen, the approved twenty twenty-four budget is. Or twenty-five, for twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yes. Um, I guess I would have to go back and look at my computer.
I, I don't know if we addressed that during budget time, but we would have to comply with state law.
Right.
So, we have no choice.
Mm-hmm. Okay, do we have a motion? I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by DuPontic, second by Lassie. Any discussion? Roll call please.
White, absent Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
Flossing, absent DuPontic.
Yes, motion carries. Recommendation for new hires to ambulance department, Michael Jenkins and Alex Antonio.
These were recommended by the ambulance department. Again, we do not have a public safety committee that we could have a forum with, so it, it did not go to the public safety committee.
And the ambulance department, who recommended this? Was it?
Emily and Eric Will, our director and training officer.
Okay.
Well, was there a recommendation? I'll move, we hire Michael Jenkins and Alex Antonio.
Okay, motion by Lassie. Do we have a second?
I'll second this.
Second by Fitzpatrick. Any discussion? Roll call please.
White, absent Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
Flossing, absent DuPontic.
Yes, motion carries. E, cancel or reschedule February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five council meeting.
I don't think that's necessary. I do have, Sarah and Kirsten will be out of the office. I do have someone coming in to help support the front desk during that week, so it should be just fine.
Okay.
Great.
All right, great. Employee dress code policy. So I presented this, and it's literally taken, taken from the League of Minnesota Cities. Joel, I don't know if you had time to look at it.
I, I did, um, I, I guess I won't show my midriff, but that's, that's what it is.
Thanks, Joel.
Although I'm not technically an employee of the city.
So you can.
No, I, I'm sorry, all joking aside, it, it is a, a, a well, well-drafted policy. I did look through it. Uh, it's similar to what a lot of other cities use as it is from the league, so.
So feel free to take out, add, you know, no, I, it, it makes no difference to me. I was, I was asked that flip-flops should be on there, or taken off, that as allowed footwear. Again, makes no difference to me. I know people wear flip-flops all the time. They hurt my toes.
I have no problem with this. I think we got you covered.
All right, a lot of flip-flops?
I don't know. I, I don't care.
I'll make a motion to accept the dress code as presented.
Okay, with or without flip-flops?
With or without flip-flops.
Okay, I will second that. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next one, same, same scenario, taken from the League of Minnesota Cities, it's regarding the phone stipend policy. The only change that I would recommend is that it's forty dollars, not sixty, because that's currently what it is.
Yeah, you can get a better rate than sixty dollars.
Yeah, you know, I looked at that and I said, gee, that Silver Cellular is twenty-five bucks and that's, that's great.
Right, the current, yeah, and the current policy is forty, and I think the eligibility, our eligibility is not necessarily only those, those positions, so.
Yeah, would you want to add which positions?
Um, I guess I would say the ones that are currently receiving them should be added on here. This isn't to take away from anything or anyone, but it's just to get, get a little bit more policy in there as opposed to always having to rely on past precedents, which raises me nuts.
So add the same employees that are getting the stipend now to this policy?
I, that would be my recommendation, I can't speak on, on the rest of the council's behalf. And then reduce it to forty, or less of fifty, guys. So choose. Oh, and then the only thing I think I would recommend also is this quarterly. Last day of each quarter, quarterly instead of at the end of the year. Again, just for budgeting purposes and making it more uniform. But that's on here, so no change on that.
I, I actually got a lot of feedback from the rest of the staff that we do like it annually at the end of the year. There are several staff here that don't make a lot of money and appreciate getting that rate for the holidays. And honestly, because the city operates on an annual budget, I don't know why that wouldn't be a reasonable ask to receive it only annually at the end of the year.
Okay, so we need a motion?
What, oh, okay, go ahead.
I will say something.
Oh, but if we did it, if we did it quarterly, it's more bookkeeping, right?
Yeah.
If we did it annually, it'd be one check. And if the money is budgeted, why not annually, like, I would agree with Tony. So I guess I'll make a motion that we change the phone policy to forty dollars paid yearly.
And add the employees.
Add the employees that have it already.
Okay, Motion by Fitzpatrick, do we have a second?
I will second that.
Second by Lassie, any discussion? Yes, sir.
Clarification on that. It's the roles that have the stipend, not individuals, is that correct? Like, you're not gonna be listing people on there, it's gonna be roles that are eligible for the stipend, okay.
All in, all in page twelve, so roll call please.
White, absent Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
Flossing, absent DuPontic.
Yes, motion carries. Wes Babbitt Development and ITRV meeting recommendations. Okay. Becky, do you want to?
I'm sure, one of the, the main things that we learned in our Wes Babbitt meeting was that ITRV is possibly thinking about phasing the funding, we had asked for one point five million for the grant, but they were talking about possibly phasing it as seven hundred fifty thousand, just first go around and then in July, having us re submit for the second, seven hundred fifty thousand. So I think that was the biggest part of what we learned in that meeting.
Yeah, and it was also a bit more point-based than we realized, so we added more information to them, which was good to hear because they were unaware of some of the stuff that they were looking for that we actually had already in our original plan, such as the multi-housing, which was a big one, because that increases the residential number in that, and they weren't aware that it was potentially three phases in a hundred years, but whatever. So that's just kind of where it is, and so after all these years of finally, of, of limping this along, we were able to get a little bit more momentum back again. Jason, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
Um, no, just that it's anticipated that the first phase of funding shouldn't be on the agenda at the board meeting the last week of February.
Okay. Yep.
I have one question. Do you gotta put a well and a septic in, isn't that a little wetlands?
No, there's development in wetland, the subdivision's designed around wetland and there's water and sewers gonna be serving all the homes.
Could it, why does it say we need a septic and a well?
No. Yeah, that's probably in Annieland, and I was using Annieland as a, as an example, as how fast newly created lots have been head-sold after, that was a private developer that created that. That was a point of comparison as to new developments that were selling. And they need well and septic out there, they only have power at the side, in front of the site, so they have to bring the power to. Okay.
Yep.
Ready? Okay, now, Resolution Number twenty twenty-five oh-two, implementing a ban on feeding deer within the city limits. We discussed this at the study session before, so I had asked to, it was recommended to go forward with it, so I'm assuming everyone was able to look at what the other, other areas had done. Is there a resolution in here? Can I see?
No, I don't see it.
For the deer feeding ban?
And I think it was just an ordinance from the other cities as examples.
So, but we don't have a, a resolution written?
No, I did not write a resolution.
So we don't have a twenty-five oh-two?
Unless Kirsten, maybe that's what she's doing. She pulled one.
Okay. Kirsten, come back. Did you have any examples or resolutions?
I included what Silver Bay and Aurora have for the ban, Ely doesn't have anything, neither does Emmett. Silver Bay's ordinance on it is more so while you have to pay an annual permitting fee to feed deer and it, whether or not that's approved is up to the D and R. Versus Aurora just simply does not allow it as they have a ban in place that is to kick the public police. So those are all for their ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like more time. The other, Aurora goes, or Silver Bay goes into all kinds of animals and everything else I think just muddies the water. So I'd like some time to just look at a sample that was provided. City of Aurora here, ninety, ninety-two point two. I think we need something simple, you know, we don't need to go and outthink ourselves.
Well, we don't have a resolution.
Joel, would this be something we would want to add as an ordinance? Or is a resolution for a ban on feeding deer?
Uh, be an ordinance, because otherwise it wouldn't be enforceable, the resolution, again, you have motions, which are verbal at the, at the meeting, you have resolutions which are in writing, many have ordinances which are read multiple times, published, they're made part of what's enforceable by the city on the citizenry, it'd be an ordinance.
Okay, so we need to change this to ordinance?
Yep.
And then we need a sample ordinance?
Well, and we, well, not a sample, we need a proposed ordinance for reading and, and.
Publish it.
Yep.
Okay. So that will be changed and tabled for the next one?
Would this need to be go to planning and going then?
Yeah, I, I think they need a little direction from the council of what you'd like to see included or not included in that, so they can produce something for you to review and then appropriately adopt.
Well, I can, I can bring into planning and have them look at it. It's, like I said, it's not something we need to really enact until fall because the deer are already coming into town. I think if we get it in place next fall, we'll be, we'll be doing good. So I shall put it before the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. Okay, League of Minnesota Cities Safety and Loss Control Workshop, April twenty-second.
I was hoping that the council would approve for departments, like department heads to be able to vote on this if they would like to. I've had, I think Caitlin was the only one so far that was interested in going, she did go through it last year. Is, is this what?
I expect interest, I, I, I went a couple years ago, it was fantastic.
Yeah, yeah, I went last year too, it was very inspirational.
I move we allow city staff plus city council members to attend the safety and loss workshops. They can be beneficial.
Um, I see.
We've done it in the past.
I see different dates and locations, so are you approving?
Up here.
Virginia?
Yep.
Okay, and the workshop fee and mileage, not mileage?
It would be expenses, mileage.
Okay. Okay. And then, so there's a motion by Lassie, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Motion by Lassie, Second by Fitzpatrick, discussion? Is this class offered online?
No, these are all in, in person.
Okay, is there a safety one-on-one? Am I confusing it with a different?
On T L O C C.
Uh-uh. Okay, alright, that was my only question. Alright, uh, roll call please.
White, absent Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
Flossing, absent DuPontic.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, Local Board of Appeal and Equalization scheduled for April twenty-second.
This is actually week after our meeting, we can ask to change the date, it's not a hundred percent set in still yet. So if they made a recommendation, if they have an opening, so have it on the council meeting date or you can change that council meeting date to the twenty-second.
And that's what they put on the back of your taxes.
Mm-hmm.
And that has to be at six, doesn't it?
Um, they, this is the, the time they gave me, this is what was scheduled by them.
Oh.
What time is it? Am I missing it?
I thought it was five, I think they scheduled it from five, five to six, yeah.
And they're doing it here?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wow, I got my last one, I had to go all the way to the top.
Oh, no, we do them nearly here.
Do you have land all over there?
No.
Okay.
That's where the workshop was.
Oh, that was training.
Training for equalization.
This is for, this is for people to come.
Oh, this is for the people to come.
Complain about how much you're taxing them, okay, which we don't control.
It just happens that they're on the same day.
Well, I, I think we should keep it the same and, and it's a regular council meeting.
Okay, I'll try to see if I can get it changed, so, and I'll let you know next meeting if, if I was able to do that.
Okay. Okay, um, on to L, Camphrom Committee Opening.
Oh, uh, Councilor White asked to put that on the agenda, he wanted to potentially gauge interest from the public and see if the council would be open to opening the committee up to members of the public.
I'm not opposed to it.
I have to think about that. Well, most of the work is already done. There's very little else to do, and who's on there, you and Tony and I and Caitlin. Well, it's up to you guys, I, I don't know if it's necessary.
Sounds like you got a full committee.
We've got four or five that have been involved, but it's all the way through, so. Whether we need another person, I don't know, and I don't know what they would be able to, able to add.
That's, I guess that's where I'm, I'm with you there too, outside of setting rates annually, there's really not any decisions to be made anymore.
And the council ultimately has to set the rates, so. I, I guess I'm not in favor of that. But you guys can. If I'm not in favor, you can't pass it. Didn't know I had all this power.
Whatever. You might as well vote still, just in case everybody is.
I don't know, but there's nothing to change, because it is what it is right now. Right?
Yeah.
That's how I see it.
Make a motion, it'll, it'll fail.
Right. Unless you want to table it, but.
I'll still be opposed.
Okay, on to M then, New Minnesota State Flag, so I don't know if everyone saw the WhatsApp Babbitt post in regards to the flag that is, is at City Hall right now, the new, new Minnesota flag has been posted. So I, I asked like how that was decided, you know, like truly not knowing, I didn't even notice that it had changed, so that's my bad. I appreciate what the vets do, because I know they handle all the flags and the changing of them and everything. So I asked to have the, the minutes of February twenty twenty-four and the letter that was sent to the representatives in regards to the comment on the state, on the state flag here to be flown at City Hall. So from the sounds of it, it sounds like the city prefers the original flag, the municipalities do not have to fly the new flag. And I just wanted to bring this up for discussion to see if there were any comments or any recommendations to change. It is the vets that are, that are taking care of it at the memorial, so I don't know if it was their decision, I, I truly don't know. When was the new one put up, do you know?
Recently, this summer.
The new one?
The new one?
No, no, it wasn't just, yeah, it was just a couple of months ago.
New one, just, yeah.
So like January, December?
I think it's January one.
January one?
It was recent.
Okay. So there was just a lot of, a lot of comments, so I just wanted to bring it up, if anyone wanted to change anything.
Yeah, you do.
Chris?
I do.
I guess I have a question maybe.
I, I detest that flag, I think it was totally unnecessary, I think it was done by the woke people and the DDI people down in the Twin Cities who could give a rip less about us. The cost of the flag is, to change it over is phenomenal, millions and millions of dollars. And I've not heard one good comment on the flag. Everybody that's approached me has said, why are you flying it? Take it down. We prefer it down. So I'm gonna move we take the flag down and do not fly it, it's, we don't have to fly it according to state statute. Only stated agencies have to fly it, so that's my motion.
I now second it.
Okay, Motion by Lassie and a second by Fitzpatrick. Discussion, I would like to add on here that I have had people say they will purchase the new flag to be flown. The original, no, the original.
Oh, yeah.
Original new flag to be flown, so there wouldn't be a cost, an additional cost to the vets who had, had put it on there, so. And I also want to add that every councilman signed this letter in twenty, of support of the original Minnesota flag. What was the date of this? Well, the motion.
It's on the letter.
Well, that's where I'm looking, I can't see the date on there. Well, that's where I'm looking. I can't see the date on the letter.
On to the letter. The motion was
But yeah, the motion was, was done February 26, 2024. There's no date on the letter, but the motion was to send the letter, so.
Okay.
Um, yes, sir.
I have a question before you vote. So I'm, I'm totally in support of where you're going with this, but it's technically being flown at a veterans memorial. I don't know if that matters or not. It's, it's technically not the
Correct.
City Hall's flag.
It's not city property, though, is it?
It isn't on city property. Okay, I just, I just wanted to run that by everybody, like I not really the city's.
Right.
Well, it isn't to offend anybody as a veterans. It's just an idol.
No, no, I'm, I'm totally agree with what you're doing there. I'm just throwing it out there.
I just think he's gotta go.
Okay, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, Minnesota State pardon? Iron Range Plumbing and Heating quote for heat pump number eight.
This was what Les was talking about.
Mm-hmm, so we're tabling that for till next.
I do also want to let you know that we did have some applications come in about renting the room. That room, that, that heat pump heats and it's not working. So the room is not heated at the moment. That's why my door is constantly open right now over there. So just to keep that in mind, that there is kind of a time-sensitive issue with that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, so that is tabled, so on to zero, or oh, purchase agreement, which now brings me to the fact that I have to step down and we won't have a quorum then.
Nope.
So that, that will now be tabled to the next meeting.
I'll vote with
I'm sorry.
To an obvious member to the council.
Right? So the only thing I want to add to this is that since this has to be tabled due to lack of quorum is that the only other change on here, this was a closing of February 22nd, so if it's tabled to the next meeting, the closing date would have to change. Are you okay with a different closing date? Mr. Elebrow? Okay, thank you. So I can revise that and submit it for the council meeting. We're gonna, sorry about that. Okay, B, Softwell Compswax Building. That is the addition. Or P, sorry.
Yeah, so I had, I had asked to put this back on. Uh, I know that we had discussed that we'd probably put the building up for bids. I think the best way to do that is to get the most exposure for the building is to use the Two Rivers Auction Service again. I think that'll generate the most interest and could possibly run up a decent bid for the building. And again, we, we probably wouldn't slate it till spring, but I kinda wanna have some things in place to go ahead and do that. So I guess I'd be asking for your authorization to move forward in, in starting to set that to, to sell it that way.
Well, we kinda designated you to be the head honcho on this, so.
You did, but I asked to put it out for bids, not to add it to an auction service. So I just wanted to be clear that I think that that's the way we should do that.
I'm good with any way you think is fit, Tony.
Yes, I am too. John?
Yes, I am too.
Okay. Do we need a motion? Do we need a motion that?
No, because you already authorized me to do so.
Okay, sounds good. All right. And then next council meeting will be held February 18, 2025, correct? Same time, same place?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn on the second.
Adjourn, uh, motion by Fitzpatrick, second by Lassie to adjourn meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we go on to the special EDA meeting. So we'll call the special meeting to order. Roll call please.
Uh, White, absent Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Lassie.
Here.
Lawson, absent DuPontic.
Here. Um, public input. Does anyone wanna add anything for public input? Okay, hearing none. Purpose of the meeting is to potential lease agreements. Applicants and statements available lease agreements.
Can't do anything, Jenny. You don't have war.
Well, if we all agree.
Does somebody need to recuse on these?
Not that I, I would.
Oh, is this different?
The, the only reason we couldn't down the purchase agreement is because Andrea needed to step down.
Oh, okay.
So she couldn't, she couldn't vote.
So we have two possible applicants. This will be for room 131, which is right across from the office. One of the applicant, um, did say she could be interested in, I don't know what the room number is, but it's the all the way down the hall by the PD. Uh, we have our tables come here in storage. It was one room where, um, I think RLE was remodeling it at one point. She said the properties was going to rent, remodel it. They began the process, but they never finished. And never finished, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, but she was wondering, or they were wondering if they were to rent the room unfinished, if there would be compensation for reduced rent, if they were going to be doing the renovation, or the city being the renovation, or things like that. Otherwise, it would be between the two leasing for this 131 that's across from our office.
Um, does the city, I thought we used to. I don't remember though, because we didn't have a lot of rental. Is there an application process? Because I know there
That's, I was going to ask that also. I'm not sure on what the city did previously.
I don't remember either.
Leasing. Yeah. Just from looking at the prior, so what you have included in the packet is the prior leasing agreement, just without the name for the person. We kept everything the same and changed the name, just like now. Previously, there wasn't an application, more so just a letter of expressed interest and then the EDA for that leasing agreement.
And then like a deposit down and all that kind of stuff? So I see one of these applicants is do, would be doing nutrition slash tea shop. Do they need to have like a, are they gonna be serving that or just selling it?
They would be serving.
Does that fall under the safe serve guidelines? Where they would need to have, um, the license for safe serve?
Yeah, we were also wondering that.
Like, I know food. It's, is this just beverage or would she be doing food too?
It's just beverage, yeah.
It's just beverage. But yeah, I don't know if that needs a safe serve license or not.
Yeah, I don't know. And there's no running water or anything in that room.
Right, and you need running water in order to be able to do that, to clean essentially.
And to make tea.
For making the drinks, she did say that she was planning on bringing gallons of water, so that would be an issue. I don't know about cleaning side of it.
Yeah, I don't know if safe, safe serve, serve safe, safe serve, serve safe. I don't know if that meat is applicable to beverage owners.
I don't know. I think in the past, we rented the rooms as is, you know. If you look at one across, it was, it was empty. When she rented it, she brought her own stuff. When she left, she took her own stuff. I don't, I'm not in favor of renovating a room that could be very short-term, even though it says long-term. I mean, they wanna come in and rent it as is, that's fine.
Right, and I know other commercial spaces would have you renovated to how you want and it's, they have to put it back to what it was
Yeah.
when they leave, unless it's approved by the owner.
And that's fair white walls. Yeah. Paying it, that's good.
And then when you leave, it has to be fair white walls again.
Yeah. This one here that just says February 1st. Does she need a long-term?
Both of these would be long-term leases, yep.
What was the, what would be the length of the lease? Would you do like year-to-year? I guess that would be up to the EDA. So I typically do our leases year-to-year with, um, like an increase after a year typically, just because there's always an increase on taxes and utilities and warrants and whatnot, so.
Do we know what the first one wants to use it for?
Um, yes. Massage and Yep, and then also have like a storefront where she sells, um, like bums and things like that on the
What is she gonna, I missed what you said.
Massage and therapy, like holistic treatments.
Okay.
And rechewing.
Similar to them.
What the man was.
What the man was.
Oh.
That's okay. I hear, nobody heard.
You didn't hear it, right? It is up to you.
I would make a motion that we rent the room to Tara. The mayor's.
Okay, on a monthly basis?
Monthly basis.
Or a lease term?
Yeah, we could have a lease for a year.
Okay. Starting.
Well, we don't have heat in that room, so, oh, I would say at least March 1st. It couldn't be sooner than that. I don't know.
You could say March 1st pending heat.
Sure.
March 1, 2024, 5 to February 28, 2026. That's a year term.
And then you'd also have to decide a damage deposit, which the previous one was $500.
That seems fair.
And then the rent right now is that at $200 a month?
Mm-hmm. Okay. So $200 a month, $500 damage deposit. Not to be construed as last month's rent. I think that's okay. Starting effective March 1st pending heat. Okay. All right, do we have a second on the motion?
Yeah.
Second by Lassie. Any discussion? Roll call please.
White, absent Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
Lawson, absent DuPontic. Yes, motion carries.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
How about the other one?
What other one?
I think there are two.
Well, there are two people, but one's
One, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
Unless if the other one wanted to rent the room and renovate it.
Right.
We wanted to do that. Just a second one.
The first one, the one that you approved.
Oh, yeah, was there a preference as to who wanted which?
Um.
I guess it is.
Yes and no, I mean, I think Tara was hoping that the city would be ren, renovating the room.
I think Tara was, so they were both interested in 131. If 131 wasn't available, Tara was interested in the other space pending whether or not the city would complete the renovations that were already started.
Okay.
Or she was also open to potentially renovating it herself if rent was reduced.
So I guess that's what the lease is, and she can take it. Um, and if she prefers not to, then it can go, it can be offered to the other person, I guess.
Okay, okay.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, we do.
Motion by Lassie. Do we have a second? Second by Fitzpatrick. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Hey, Tony. Tony.
Yeah?
What's your email?
What?
You probably have seven.